Good to see former Mayor Bissett here and Councilman Hunt here. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to call to order the March 18, 2014, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. And as always, if you'll join me in the pledge, we'll begin that way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then if you'll join me in our invocation. Thank you for the changing seasons. Thank you for the blessing we have to live in a place where we enjoy all four seasons. Even though it can be confusing this time of year, we appreciate the variety and the opportunity to enjoy all of your creation. We also thank you for our public servants who serve at local, state, national levels. We particularly hold up your public servant Senator Martin Nesbit, who's passing recently, has shocked us all and helped us to appreciate what a wonderful man and wonderful person he was. Help us to follow the wonderful programs and principles that he worked so hard to achieve in his 35 years in the General Assembly. And help us to improve and get on his shoulders and do bigger and better things for the community. I'd also hold up Chief Howard Beddingfield, the new leader at the Inca-Canler Fire and Rescue Department, as for your particular favor. Chief Beddingfield will be a wonderful asset to that community, and we're grateful for his leadership and his willingness to serve us all in times of emergency and fire. And help us, sitting up here, to have wisdom and courage to do the right things and to listen to people, to understand what the community wants and what we feel is best for the community. And help us to always vote our conscience and do things that would please you and please the community that we have been elected to represent. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this commission, it's the duty of every commissioner to avoid both actual and possible conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner know of any potential or known conflict of interest concerning any matter coming before us today? If not, we will go straight to public comment. The time limit for any comment before the commission is three minutes. If your time expires, then you can leave any question along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects upon which are within the jurisdiction of the Buncombe County Commission or pertain to matters upon which we can act. Any individual speaking during public comments should address the entire board. Any polling of members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disrupts, disturbs the session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously considered by the board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am, in the back and then in the front row. Thank you.
Hi, I am Reverend Lisa Landis, and I've stood in front of you many times and requested different paperwork. And the last time I had requested, under the Freedom of Information Act, and I did get some of it, but not all of it. This is just regarding the BCTV. So I'm still requesting, as I had requested the last time, for paperwork regarding the finances in Buncombe County. Something else that I had wanted to talk about, I had talked before about the pollution that you have. And I had made a suggestion as to a fee. So when you are having different manufacturing companies coming in here, and especially when they are hazardous to the environment, is there and why is there not a, something with them saying, okay, if you want to operate and you have an opportunity to pollute the area, then what is insurance for? You know, what is a fee for? You know, instead of being, you know, oh, let's clean it up, well, why don't you be productive? You know, why don't you, you know, assert, okay, you need a million dollars. If there is a spill, that this money will be used in order to clean it up. You know, that is my question, that is my suggestion. You know, instead of, like I said, you know, cleaning up the messes after the companies have already pulled out, why don't you say, okay, if there is a chance that your facility could harm the environment, then there should be a policy, an insurance policy with that. So that's all that I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landis. Yes, sir. Front row. Anybody else wish to be heard tonight? Mr. Rice will be after.
I'm Alan Ditmore of Lester. I have a couple of questions regarding the family planning clinic that's within the Health Department. I've seen budget adjustments come through funding that clinic. And I've always wondered if this was exclusively federal grant money, federal Title X money being passed through, or if the county has ever added locally raised tax money to the federal money, or possibly state money, to the money from larger governments, or just passed through the money and not added a penny to it of, you know, of property tax, of locally raised money. And I guess I'd like the answers, you know, I've tried to look in the budgets. I guess I'd like the answers made apparent in budget documents or in the online somewhere. The other question is, I've heard from other activists, sort of, of course, the local Planned Parenthood has asked you in the past to put local money into this, into the family planning clinic. But I can't find any record of such a request. The local one is Planned Parenthood Health Systems. And there's no documentation of such a request. So if they had ever did make the same request, it appears that they did so privately. So I'm wondering if there's any such request is on record, or if they're working exclusively lobbying, you know, in Raleigh or in Washington and haven't bothered to ask you. The, I would point out that women's health is not the only reason, far from the only reason, to fund the family planning clinic. There's many. There's air quality, water quality, the school budget, class size, and, of course, traffic. And highway traffic is among them. Thank you.
Dr. Green, can we get him, can we answer, I think we, do we have your address? If not, if you could leave that with the county manager, we will get answers, written answers to your questions.
Okay, thanks.
The good questions. Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I grew up in a big family, big family, 19. We grew up poor, but we was happy, had love, support. I'm still doing it today. That's what makes Buncombe County, that's what makes the United States, that's what makes the world, is how that love is shared, one to another. When we forget that, we're doomed. I say that to reach out to you and to look and see what you can do in regards to the homeless, the poor in our community that don't make a living wage. And I tell you what, politics, I've seen it so raw over the years. It's always holding a baby in your hand, kissing it, making all these gestures of politics. But when the office seat starts getting warm, it seems to fade. And I don't speak to this just to the county commissioners. I speak to the whole political system that we have in the United States. You can almost predict what the next word's going to be. You can almost predict that it's going to be about education and children, you know. But what I'd like to see is something before the budget on the poor in Buncombe County and the homeless. The initiatives for 10-year initiative on the homeless. The veterans, they're being taken care of pretty good in some ways. They're still not being taken care of thoroughly, but we got a lot of them. I think we need to hear something from our folks in human service related to this. Let's put politics aside and listen and put it out here where the public can see it. Because the people I deal with every day, the children and the families, and many of them, let me tell you, they're not getting the needs met. And we've got plenty that we can give, but we need to hear it. And maybe the publicizing it from here will get it reached out to the communities where people can help. So I would like to see something on that before budget time and we just see numbers in the graph. Let's put reality to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment tonight? All right, and I will, if anyone does want to speak on the Interstate 26 Connector, we're going to do that at a later time. So you haven't lost your chance. I would like to recognize in the crowd, former Mayor Lou Bissett is here tonight. We have current Councilman Mark Hunt, and we have DOT Board Member David Brown. We appreciate all of you being in here. I see Jay Swain also hiding there behind Mr. Ditmore. All of you are important, but we particularly appreciate elected and appointed officials being here tonight. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as it's been printed? A motion by Vice Chair Frost, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, which again means we approve the consent agendas as published, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries seven to zero. We do have a proclamation on Buncombe County as a Purple Heart County that will be delivered to our veterans that serve our country so well. The next order of business on, is there, okay, we are going to move the county manager's report. That is one change that I think we agreed on in pre-session to after new business. So that brings us to Mr. Jay Swain and Rick Tipton from NCDOT to talk about the interstate situation. And I think we have a resolution before the board tonight. After Mr. Tipton and/or Mr. Swain speak and answer questions, we are going to have a public discussion of this. If anyone has feelings about this, we're going to give you three minutes to come up and talk to us. And then the board will deliberate and take up the motion that we have in front of us. Ms. Tipton, thank you for being here. I know you've put a lot of time in this, and we're grateful for your efforts.
Thank you, Chairman Gant, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Hopefully, I can provide some information as to your decision, if your resolution as you go forward. Hopefully, I can, should give me directions, but apparently I'm not too good to get the right button.
It's a tricky one. It gets a lot of people.
Hey, there we go. Looky there.
We have to work on that.
Thanks. The reason I'm here is to provide some information on some recent refinements to the I-26 Connector project, known as TIP Project I-2513, particularly Section B and the new location portion that crosses the French Broad River. And what I'm going to do is just show you is the refinements have been made and to hopefully be able to answer any questions you might have about that. First, just a little bit of what's going on and why it's important today is, last year, House Bill 817 was enacted by Governor Corey, was signed into law, and it completely changed how all transportation projects going forward will be funded. Changed from where we had the equity formula that had been around for many years to a prioritization system, and all projects will go through this system, which we are currently going through right now. And it creates a data-driven approach to looking at projects and looks at things such as congestion and safety, mobility, economic development, and then cost. And cost is a very important factor. We look at a benefit cost of projects going forward. And it divides the projects into modes statewide and regional and division. And of course, the project here that we're talking about is a statewide project. Of course, it's interstate, so it's very important to the, not only the county, but the region and the state as a whole. And so, just to point out here, the project specifically, what we're talking about, you can see the Connector project, as we refer to it here in Asheville, and the area is, it's divided into three sections, A, B, and C. Of course, A's in the middle, and then C is at the western end, and B is at the northern end. And B is the new location portion of the project, where we cross the French Broad River. And hopefully, the plan will be to take care of the issues that we see with congestion on the Bowing Bridges and take that into consideration going forward and provide some relief, a much safer situation for everybody going forth. And I've been working on this project for a number of years. And so what we've developed, what we have here is, just to give you a little brief, where we're at with our schedule, is we have a public meeting coming up. Looks like now we're going to have that in early May, and that'll be the next overall public meeting for the project. That'll be an informal meeting for people to come in and, you know, step up close, look to the maps, talk to staff, and provide their comments going forward. After that, we're expected to have a new draft environmental impact statement in the fall with another public hearing, and this would be a formal public hearing in the winter of this year. And then the final environmental impact statement is scheduled for summer of 2016. And this is where we'll really have the decisions of all the environmental document taken care of and moved forward. And then that would allow, what we have had scheduled has been for right-of-way acquisition in one section to start in 2018, and then construction letting to start in 2020. Now, all this is going to be dependent upon how this prioritization transpires over the next months, what project will be scheduled, because this schedule was based upon the old formula that we were working under. So as we see the results of this prioritization going forward, then we'll have a better idea of what project and when we might be scheduled. So just to know that that was the old schedule from before. Quickly, just to point out, this is a crossing, this is the Section B Alternative 3 that's been around for a number of years that we've been looking at. And if you could just take notice there of where it crosses the French Broad River, if you can hopefully pick that out. I should have had, I thought about using a pointer, but I figured it out pretty quick. A pointer doesn't work on these screens, so sorry for that. But it crosses quite a ways to the north there, and then project finishes up north of Broadway there, that's top of the screen. Alternate 3C, which is a refinement, all the differences in this project are from the north of the West Gate up to where it crosses the river. And if you can see kind of the red place right there where it crosses, it crosses much further to the south. So that greatly reduces some footprint and impacts, and I'll get to that just a little bit later on how that does that. I've also got another slide here that kind of shows it side by side. So you can see, hopefully you can see the difference. And I'll slow down. If, you know, if anybody's got any questions along the way, please feel free to interrupt if that would help. But you can see there where it crosses further to the north, and then there it crosses further to the south in this refined 3C alternative. And then I've got the same thing. It's another comparison. It's turned, for clarity, a little bit further to the, it's turned in the east, north is pointing to the right side of the screen. And there again, you can see where the crossing is further to the south. And what I want to point out here is, if you look, the impacts on the alternative, the 3, at the top of the screen, it had a number of impacts to Emma community that this would eliminate, specifically Boone Street, as well as a couple of the mobile home parks there that are there in Emma. So this greatly reduces or almost eliminates any impacts to the Emma community as a whole. So it does a job of reducing the footprint from what the other alternate 3 had been in the past. And I just put, for, these are the other alternatives, Section B, Alternate 4, and 4B. They're in there in case anybody wanted to see those, but just if not, I'll just move on. The next thing I'd like to point out is the differences in residential relocations that we're anticipating now. If you see the alternate 3, it shows a 46 to 19. And let me clear up why that 1 is in parentheses, the 54, and through that whole chart right there, is the 54 that was there was based upon the actual count. Some of, these were rooftop counts that we went back and just done lately. And so to be apples to apples, we did a rooftop count on 3. When we did the first environmental draft, environmental impact statement, you don't just go with a rooftop count. You go out and look. So you might have a residence, but it actually has two homes, like a duplex or something like that. So to make it all compare apples to apples, that's just rooftop counts. But from alternate 3 to 3C, you're looking at 46 to 19. So that was a substantial reduction in residential relocations. Our business relocations, we anticipate to be essentially about the same. After that, the other thing, and probably another very important thing, is the cost going forward. Right now, we anticipate the cost, we estimate the cost of the 3C alternate to be $230 million. That is about $20 million less than alternate 3. And then the other two alternates, 4 is $294, and alternate 4B is $332. And why that's important is, in the past, in prioritization, our plan had always been to use an average of the three alternatives that we had as a cost, which was in roughly $290 million, $295 million. And by doing that, since we haven't arrived at the alternate, that seemed to be the fairest way to go forward, considering that there had been some support for different alternatives going forward. So taking the average was the route we had gone. But as you can see, that's about $60 million more than alternative 3C. So, you know, that could have, I would expect, could have a direct impact on the overall ranking and prioritization of the project. And with that, that's what I've got. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
I've got one. Rick, whatever is done, this board isn't going to decide the route. That's going to be someone else deciding the actual route that's going to happen and the bike paths and all that.
Yes, sir. That is correct. I mean, we still have to go through the entire process of the NEPA process and select alternatives. So this is not like the alternative is being selected today. But it just gives direction as to where we feel that the local community could be satisfied. It gives us some guidance to go forward, especially through this prioritization.
And the resolution itself does highly recommend that we look at bike paths, pedestrian paths.
Absolutely. Sorry to interrupt, but it does. And we've already made commitments to that with this alternative in looking at and making some additional infrastructure on the Bowing Bridge on the south side to provide for those other connections for other modes we've already been making. Looking at those things, and the plan is to be able to provide that. That's what we're shooting for there.
And there is a timeline that we have, that there's going to be a ranking, I think you told me, next month. Is that?
Absolutely.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Currently, what we call our spot office, but our prioritization office is going through this process right now. They're crunching numbers on projects statewide, gathering data. And our deadline to get data in for the numbers that they're going to put in is the end of the month, March 31st. We have to have, they're going to have to have a number to go with and go forward with their prioritization by the end of March. And the reason is, is you can imagine, this is one project of many, many across the state. Plus, we have a deadline to meet in the fall, that we have to have all this work done so we can get a new transportation improvement program to meet the federal requirements, so we can go forward with all projects.
And what would be the timeline, if we, right now, we're not on the radar. Is that kind of fair? We're barely on the radar. Is that fair to say?
Well, I mean, I think the thing is, is we have to see the project, prioritize it, and see how they all score. And then they're going to have to look at these statewide and then figure out what's going to fit in with the dollars that we have. And then hopefully, you know, however it works out, we're going to see some favorable numbers and can get this project moving forward. A lot of work has been done on this project. So if the funding can become available, we can definitely continue and move on in the direction of getting the project to construction.
Any questions before we hear from the public and start our discussion after that?
How long has this been a topic and planning?
The project as a whole, my understanding is started, originally was discussed in 1989. And I've personally, personal note, I've been able to work on it since about '95. So I've had the opportunity in some capacity to work on it quite a bit, but it has been around for a number of years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, we may recall you.
That's fine. Thank you.
After we hear from the public, but thank you, Ms. Tipton.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and take some public comment. Any member of the public wish to be heard on this? We'll do three minutes. We'll try to answer any questions. We have the experts here that can maybe give us some factors. Alan, we'll start with you, and then in the corner, and then this gentleman in the red shirt. You, in the back corner there, you'll be second, and you'll be third. Come on up. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll start by, I'm Alan Ditmore of Lester. I guess I'll start by putting on my Bostonian hat. I was born and raised in the Boston suburbs. And from a Bostonian perspective, this is a solution in need of a problem. There's never been a significant traffic issue in Buncombe County, and there never will be. The reason there never will be is because of fuel shortage, that pretty soon now, there won't be enough fuel in Buncombe County to run six lanes of cars, even four lanes of cars. And if we can just take our time and continue to deliberate long enough and, you know, think of some more plans to consider, then the problem will be solved for us by imminent fuel shortage. As you go on to say, I have an objection. There's one word to which I really object in the proposal, and that's in the second-to-last "whereas" statement. It's the word "soon." Because if you press, if you press for time and we act hastily, we're going to be, you have the potential to preempt events and make a mistake before we see the fuel shortage change the situation. And I don't want to do that. So we should take our time and continue to consider our options. And we'll see the situation change. The fuel shortage will become apparent. And we'll see that there isn't a problem, and there's not going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ditmore. In the back, and then if y'all want to come sit on the front row, or maybe next to Ms. Libby here, you can sit over here, sir, the next one up. Who wants to speak after this gentleman in the red? Okay, Mr. Muncie?
Hi, my name's Steve Rasmussen. I'm a 20-year resident of West Asheville, and I've been closely involved in the city of Asheville's Haywood Road Vision project. I want to read a statement on behalf of the I-26 Connectus project, which should come in at just under three minutes. "The I-26 Connectus project is made up of representatives from the Asheville neighborhoods that stand to be most impacted by the I-26 Connector project, including West Asheville, Burton Street, and Monford. The group is convened by the Western North Carolina Alliance. We have been working together since 2009. All participants agree that the unfinished portion of I-26, as it passes through Buncombe County, should be completed in a timely way. The I-26 Connectus project members are unable to support the North Carolina Department of Transportation's request for the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to endorse an alternative for Section B of the I-26 Connector project at this time. We recognize that the new state-level funding prioritization process is underway and that the project may rank higher in that process if the least expensive alternative is analyzed. However, we believe it is premature to ask the city and county to endorse an alternative prior to the completion of the environmental impact statement and a..." prior to the completion of the environmental impact statement and a full understanding of the relative impacts and benefits of each alternative. Endorsing the least expensive alternative at this point, even for the limited purpose of prioritization, creates a very real risk that our community will be locked into that alternative in the future, even if the EIS reveals another alternative is more beneficial. If, however, adoption of a resolution to support, in support of the least expensive alternative, alternative three C, is the best way to ensure that the project remains viable, we ask that the city and county be mindful of the following issues. That alternative three C, as currently designed, does not meet the city's long-range plans. That the resolution is for the limited purpose of prioritization and does not reflect an endorsement of a final alternative, which will be made only after completion of the EIS and public hearings. That the EIS should include infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians in all alternatives consistent with the city of Asheville's master plans. That the city and county work with DOT to create benefits for those communities that stand to be impacted most by this project. That if a final preferred alternative is selected that does not remove highway traffic from the Jeff Bowen Bridges, that the city and county advocate for a new project that will allow Patton Avenue and the bridges to become a continuous boulevard from West Asheville into, into downtown. And that the city and county continue seeking to work with DOT and the Federal Highway Administration to identify options to reduce the footprint of the project, including utilizing design exceptions and context-sensitive design, and conducting a new traffic study. Thank you.
You were right, Steve. I was right on the mark. Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Steve. Yes, sir. And then we'll hear from Mr. Muncy. Anybody else wish to be heard? Okay, then you'll be next, sir, in the front row, after Mr. Muncy.
Hello, my name's Buzzie Kennedy. I live here in a community. I want to thank all of you guys, that, everyone that's worked on this thing so hard. Started in nineteen eighty-nine, and I know a lot of you have been working on this thing for the last few years, trying to, trying to determine which one of these options might work for us. As we all know, this, the resolution must be approved in order to make, to make the priority list. And it's a new day in Asheville and Buncombe County. It's back in running for a major road improvement that will enable economic development that will occur well beyond all of our lives and those sitting in this room. So please pass this resolution.
Thank you, Buzz. Yes, sir. Mr. Muncy next, then I'll have you, sir.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Tom Muncy. Even though I live in the city, I work in the county. I'm all over everywhere, as you all know. And I'm here to represent the lay population. I'm a small business owner, and I want to say kudos to DOT for coming up with a solution. And it bothers me, I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine. I moved to Asheville when it was a quiet, sleepy little town. Not anymore. And I am so pleased to hear that we're finally getting a wonderful solution to the, for the one hundred thousand vehicles that crosses the Smokey Park Bridge each and every day. Thank you. And as they say up here in Western North Carolina, we need to get it on and get it done.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Yes, sir. And who wants to speak after this? Michelle, we have you next, then I'll have you next, sir, in front row, after, after Michelle. You're, you're next. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. We'll have you, Michelle, and then the gentleman in front row.
Thank you. I'm Dave Johnson. I'm a fifteen-year resident of Buncombe County. I'm an urban planner of fifty years' experience. I worked with the Asheville Design Center on preparing the four B and other alternatives that we looked at very carefully, put a lot of time in on that. You've heard about the other alternatives, and you haven't heard much about them, only three C. I would submit three C does some things, but it only does half the things we need to get done. It's half the project. It doesn't solve the problems on the east side of the Bowen Bridge. That's a very dangerous intersection. It all should be dealt with at one time. Now, I hope that we do get a resolution of this. The AD, the Asheville Design Center has supported completing that project, but in the right way, in a way that enhances economic development, provides a gateway to the downtown, and stimulates economic growth in, in, on both sides of the river. The Bowen Bridge was originally created to tie the two parts of Asheville together and to link West Buncombe County with East Buncombe County. It was a connector. With three C, it will cease to be a connector. It will divide the city and the county even more, and we don't need that. We need connectivity. The thinking that has gone into highway development in this country over the past thirty, forty years has changed. We now think in terms of places. We now think in terms of creating cities, not just moving cars and trucks. The three C proposal, it has some benefits, no doubt, but it seems to me very constricted. It uses up a lot of land. It tries to do too many things in a small area, and it doesn't do any of them successfully. It tries to bring interstate traffic through this area. It tries to deal with people who are coming to downtown. It tries to deal with local and regional traffic. It tries to deal with pedestrians and, and bicycles, which are becoming an increasingly important part of our transportation mix. Physically and aesthetically, I ask you to look very carefully at what this will look like, not just a two-dimensional plan, but in three dimensions as a gateway to the most important urban center in Western North Carolina. We don't need a repeat of the Bowcatcher Mountain debacle. I ask you to look very seriously at this, and I hope your resolution today is not a first step towards endorsing a proposal that hasn't even been cleared through the NEPA legislation. And I think we need to look very carefully at that. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Pace Woods. Michelle?
Thank you so much, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Pace Wood, and I'm coming on behalf of the Inca Canler Business Association. The association feels strongly that you need to pass the resolution. It, we in Canler know, because eight, in eighty-nine, it was supposed to come to Canler. It was supposed to go on a rural path. And at that point, there was community concerns that wanted to move that path downtown, and at that point, the process stopped. And here we are in the opposite situation, where folks downtown, and I understand why, want to, you know, move it in a different direction. We basically could have, if we had moved forward in eighty-nine, saved quite a bit of funding, probably not displaced as many people as well. So I think it's time, and, and we think as the association, that you go ahead and move forward with the resolution, get on the priority list, so that we can get this done as quickly as possible and not impact folks in the future, the longer we wait, if it's ten more years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, sir. And who wants to speak after this gentleman? Okay, in the second row.
My name is Dwayne Barton, and I was coming on behalf of specifically the Burton Street community, who has in the past been impacted by the expansion of, of the highway. And how can that community be considered? That community went through a whole process of creating this community plan to help, if, if there's a great impact on the community, help stabilize the community in a way that it can continue to grow and, and prosper. And a lot of communities feel, a lot of community members feel that if this was to take place and, and more community elders and more homes and businesses are, are taken away, that the community would, wouldn't be able to stand on, on the, on the ground that it is now and continue to grow after that. So we just really want the county and even the city to consider the Burton Street community plan and, and their decision-making. I know we talked about greenways and, and bike paths, but there was other plans written from the community that we would like also to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Yes, sir. And who wants to speak after this gentleman? Thank you.
My name is Joe Manicosi. I'm a principal of a real estate economic analysis firm called Urban Three, and I was a volunteer on the Asheville Design Center project for more years than I care to count. You know, it's, there's a lot of comments about this project being started in nineteen eighty-nine, and I just want to put this out there, that Benton McKay mentioned the creation of the Appalachian Trail at a conference in nineteen twenty-one, and fifteen years it was done. It took fifteen years to make the Appalachian Trail, and we've been talking about this since nineteen eighty-nine. It's kind of ridiculous. In two thousand, the community adopted, and Mayor Biset here, who's, who headed this, as well as Brownie Newman, the CCC report. This document essentially rejected alternative three in the year two thousand, yet here we are talking about it again. That it basically says on page, like the very first document, actually, the first point says separation of interstate and local traffic. Eliminate Patton Avenue from the Smokey, or Patton Avenue and Smokey Park Bridges from the interstate link. So essentially, pull two forty off Patton Avenue, period. The work that we did on I, on, on the Asheville Design Center followed that, and we followed these recommendations to produce a design. Four years ago, when we went through this before, we actually submitted a letter on behalf of the Design Center protesting a lot of the design elements that were in four B. And it was interesting that they actually worked on three, to modify three to a three C, but we haven't seen those changes in four B. The NEPA document, the federal law that governs this, starts by saying, "The NEPA procedures must ensure that the environmental information is available to the public officials and citizens before decisions are made and before actions are taken place." So this is what a NEPA document looks like. This is the last draft that's now no longer available, that we're going to get another one. You all are making a decision before this kind of information is before you. Just making that clear. That this document that you have here is essentially a real estate analysis of where we get our money in our community. And this is a shot looking from Patton Avenue into downtown, from the west into downtown. And you can see the impact of value per acre of real estate in our community and where you all get your money. This is Asheville taxes and Buncombe County taxes. So the potency of that real estate in downtown is incredibly valuable to you all for city taxes, school taxes, and county taxes. That black dot that's in the center of the map, and you can see the gray smudge next to it, the gray is non-taxable, that's Hillcrest. That, essentially, the CCC report asked for all of that land to come back into the tax base, which would produce you more wealth. We ran the numbers of the real estate development along that black spot in the center of the map. That represents about five hundred million dollars of new development, which would represent a net present value of taxes and city, county, and school taxes of one hundred and eleven million dollars. That's the money you all get if we get this redevelopment done in the, in the center of the state, the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Who's next?
My name is Rod Hudgens. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-seven, and I really hope that you will look favorably on the connector issue and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. Any other public? Yes, sir.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity. My name is Mike Buttram. I represent the Asheville Board of Realtors. By the way, we've recently merged with Brevard, if you hadn't heard that. So we gained about two hundred and forty new members in our association. I am not here to advocate against anyone's position here. But as we probably all know, realtors spend a lot of time in cars. They sell and resell lots of real estate in and around Buncombe County. They represent to a lot of new citizens. The overall disposition of the association is to support the resolution, certainly with prudence, resting with the commissioners in terms of what your responsibilities are to the environment, but we are for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your public service, Mike. He does an awful lot, Mountain Resource Commission, various other state commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Really wasn't going to say anything, but I, I've, I've been thinking about Martin Nesbit recently, and I remember, I, I think I'm the only, looking around this room, I think I'm the only person in here who can remember nineteen eighty-nine. Martin and I served on a statewide task force for urban loop funds, and I'll never forget it. I, I really didn't know how I got appointed or why, and I was talking to Martin, and I said, "Martin, what are we going to do down there?" And he said, "Well, I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to go down there, and we're going to get our share of the money for the, for Asheville and Western North Carolina." And he did, because at that time, most of that money was planned to go to Charlotte and Greensboro, and Raleigh and Durham, and Winston-Salem. We came back, and because of the time that it has taken since nineteen eighty-nine, the money disappeared. I think we have an opportunity now to get back on the priority list so that this project can be completed, and I think that's the purpose of this resolution. And I would just also say, as a member of the I-26 Working Group, we've been working for a year. We've been trying to look at everybody's issues related to this project, and I think we, we believe that this is the right step at this time. So I urge your passage of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We certainly appreciate your public service also through the years. Any other public comment today? Mr. Rice? Anybody besides Mr. Rice wish to be heard? Yes, sir, you'll be next after him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jerry Rice from Canada. Ah, you know, this fellow's already said he is older than I was, him and Martin, but I've heard this talk, I've got videos going back to nineteen eighty-nine, all the way back further than that. But the debate that I've heard for years has been nothing but politics. That's been the debate. It's either politics or money. That's the two factors. Human life needs to be looked at in this case. We, we, we got two examples. We look at forty going down through the gorge, and there was a governor that said, "This is where it's a-going." What a mess Governor Moore made. I mean, he made a mess, and it's still a mess today. And it's continuing to be a mess for years to come. So when you put politics in the mix, you've done been screwed. So the thing that we need to think about, Sam's Gap. Oh, let's get twenty-six through here. Oh, we got this traffic flow that's amazing. I go up to Sam's Gap, set up my little video, and I do the video, and enter it into evidence as well over in the city, and, and shame the DOT people, myself, off of that little video, because they want no count near what they said it was. Now, the human side to this thing is environmental. We need to consider the human factor to this. What's coming out of Tennessee? What's coming out of South Carolina? What's coming out of the west and the east crossing us here in Little Asheville? We've got one of the most hazardous connections anywhere in the United States, right here in Buncombe County. And is anybody paying attention? I think there's a few. They've already spoke. I think some do. But when you think about the structure of this road, you need to get the traffic on through here that the hazardous that we're talking about. It don't need to be stopping in Asheville. It didn't need to come through here to start with. But we got it. But we need to think about the human life. The other end of the human perspective, in my opinion, is when this thing is built, engineers are good designers, but it ought to be environmentally looked at. This bridge don't need to be pilot drove down into the ground, because the most contaminated sites that we have in Buncombe County, it stretches from Biltmore or further on up the river, all the way through Woodfin, pass MSD, to the landfill. All that was used as contaminated landfill for years and years and years. When you start digging in that, you're going to really see what I'm talking about. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard? Is it Julie after? I'm Mr. Hudgens here.
Chairman Gant, Caddie Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening.
this evening. And thank you for your service on this board and the time that you've invested in this project. My name is Josh Holmes. I live in Alexander, and I operate a small business here in Asheville. We have 25 vehicles on the road every day that we send all throughout this region. I know about traffic issues, and I know about safety. Our region needs this project, and I urge you to pass this, adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mayfield. Anybody else wish to speak after Ms. Mayfield?
Good evening. My name's Julie Mayfield. I'm here with sort of two hats on. One is co-director at the Western North Carolina Alliance, but also a member of the Working Group and have had the real pleasure of working with Commissioners Jones and Belcher and Newman on this, as well as former Mayor Bisset and Councilman Mark Hunt and Jan Davis. And I agree that the, you know, where we are now is just a need to make a very limited decision, and I think hopefully this will come out in your conversations, but I think the resolution makes it clear that essentially what's happening now is the city and the county are sort of committing to no more than they have to at this point to keep this project alive. And I just think, I think that's real important for everybody to understand. I try not to read the comments that people post online after newspaper articles, because it just, it's too frustrating. But what I have seen in looking at some of those is that I think there's a real misperception about how long this project has been studied. It is true that it has been talked about, and much has happened over the last 25 years, but what we have yet to see is a completed and full environmental impact study. Joe put those two volumes up here. That was, that was a draft and admittedly incomplete document. So even though we have had a lot of conversation about this, we, the public and you as elected officials, have yet to actually see the full range of impacts and benefits that this project stands to bring to our community. So I say that really more for the public benefit than for yours, but for folks who, again, feel like we've talked this to death. We have, we may have talked it to death, but there's a lot of information that we still don't have about this. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Cathy, and I just want to, first of all, I just want to tell you, I really appreciate what y'all do and the hard work you put into our community. But a lot of things been said, and I don't want to hold you up. I just wanted to ask you for your support for the resolution. I think it's a positive move for our county and our community too, and I just think we need to move forward, and I just wanted to voice that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cathy. Any other public comment tonight? All right. Well, let's, who wants to read this resolution? Get started, get it on table.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner Gant. Resolution regarding the I-26 connector. Whereas traffic congestion and safety are increasing problems along I-240 and I-26 through Asheville, a critical route for regional commerce and tourism. And whereas local and regional residents, visitors, interstate travelers, and commercial freight haulers rely on this route in ever-increasing numbers. And whereas improvements to the I-240 and I-26 corridor should be minimally disruptive to the local community and should enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors wherever possible. And whereas, North Carolina Department of Transportation is, in its planning of TIP Project I-2513, the project, has indicated preliminary commitments to alternatives that, compared to earlier proposals, reduce relocation of homes and businesses, reduce sound impact through better deployment of sound walls, and provide critically needed bicycle, pedestrian, and neighborhood connectivity infrastructure consistent with local government master plans. And whereas, the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration have expressed openness to consider design alternatives that reduce scale and cost of the project, including the number of lanes required, should upcoming traffic demand studies warrant and justify reductions. And whereas, in the event that the selected design alternative does not include modifications to the I-240 infrastructure on the east side of the French Broad River to support urban redevelopment, improved connection of neighborhoods, and improvements to local traffic patterns, local governments will evaluate a separate future project through the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization to address those concerns. And whereas, various detailed alternatives for design and implementation of the project are to be fully evaluated and provided to decision-makers for formal consideration as required under the National Environmental Policy Act in the environmental impact statement in the coming months. And local leaders working through the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization can only then provide their final endorsement of any alternative. And whereas, the City of Asheville, in its five-year capital improvement plan, has designated $1 million in co-funding for the project to support critically needed community connectivity features. And whereas, the members of the community have expressed their strong preference that the project soon be funded and constructed in a way that solves current congestion and safety problems while mitigating negative project impacts and addressing community needs. And whereas, the North Carolina Department of Transportation is conducting preliminary cost-benefit evaluations of similar projects statewide under the strategic prioritization process to establish specifically which projects will be eligible for near-term funding of design and construction under the recently adopted Strategic Mobility Formula. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe, and this is also a proposed joint resolution with the City of Asheville, as follows. One, that the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe and the City of Asheville, along with the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, hereby recommend that for the purpose of the upcoming scoring and ranking process, North Carolina Department of Transportation use the estimated cost of $230 million associated with the preliminary 3C alternative for the B section of the project. And in preparation of the draft environmental impact statement for the project, NC DOT clearly include elements that will address community needs for sound barriers and bicycle, pedestrian, and neighborhood connections, including location, design, and the funding methodology of associated infrastructure elements. Two, that this resolution be effective upon its adoption, adopted this 18th day of March 2014 by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe. And that's the end of the resolution. I'd like to make just a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I appreciate everyone being here tonight who's spoken on the issue and who's been interested in this issue. A lot of folks have worked on this in various capacities, professionally and as concerned citizens for a long, long time. You know, I would just like to share that I live in the Monford neighborhood, and I work in the River Arts District, and I'm in West Asheville, you know, most every day of the week. So I spend most of my time in these neighborhoods that will be most immediately affected by the development of any of the alternatives associated with the project. And I think that what, you know, folks have been doing, I mean, you can say it's, you can say it's politics or whatever, but I think there's just been a very genuine effort in the community to look for ways to get this important project completed while genuinely looking for ways to make sure we are having the absolute minimum impact on the city and especially the neighborhoods that'll be most immediately affected by it. And furthermore, not only seeking to avoid some of the adverse impacts associated with building a major transportation project like this in a dense urban environment, but also looking for ways to not only solve the congestion problems and the safety problems on the Smokey Park Bridge, where we do have this co-mingling of, it's not just 100,000 cars a day that's the problem, it's that we have this co-mingling of true interstate traffic, big vehicles, big trucks that are going across the country, co-mingling with just local folks trying to get from West Asheville to downtown or some part, some other place to the east, which is, you know, a real safety issue and a real congestion issue. But we're also looking for ways to bring more connectivity to these neighborhoods in the city center, bring better bicycle, pedestrian infrastructure as part of this project, so we're not just having a, the highway congestion problems and safety problems addressed, but bringing some other true benefits from multimodal infrastructure perspective that people really care about in Asheville, and looking for ways to incorporate that into the project. And one of the things that I think has been most promising to me over the past year in particular, that folks have been working on this and the DOT's been working on this, is that, because I think the connectivity piece is something that the community has spoken real loudly and clearly for from an early stage. And a lot of the, a lot of the ideas around what that might look like have really, there's certainly more important design work to be undertaken, but there's been a lot more degree of specificity about what some of the connectivity infrastructure can look like. And I think as this process goes forward and the environmental impact statements come out, I think, and a lot of folks have already been very involved in giving the DOT their ideas on where we want the connectivity, what we want that infrastructure to look like. And I think we've been impressed by how much they have heard that and are incorporating a lot of those ideas into this project. So there'll be some really, some really neat aspects to that, to the project, not just inclusive of the highway piece of that. One of the things I would like to just reiterate as well is that we are not endorsing an alternative for the project tonight. It's been sort of, it's been sort of stated in some of the coverage of that, but that is not what we are doing tonight. We cannot endorse an alternative until all the alternatives are laid out through the environmental impacts study process. The reason we are speaking tonight is that the state DOT will soon complete a statewide ranking of all of these major projects. And it's become very clear through looking at the new funding formulas that the state has developed over the last year, that if this project does not rank highly in the statewide prioritization process, there simply won't be a project developed of any kind for many, many years to come. So by asking for the purposes of this ranking process, that the lower-cost alternative, the cost assumptions associated with that alternative be used in that ranking process, we are giving our community the best chance we have that at least some alternative will come through this statewide ranking process so that our community and this project remains in the running for financial feasibility of being, of being developed in the coming years. Once the full EIS is completed, it may be very clear that all of these alternatives would rank competitively on a statewide basis, and if one of them stands out as clearly superior to others, elected officials in the community will continue to have the, to preserve the option to speak to that at that time. So, I think those are all the comments I wanted to share. So Chairman Gant, thank you for allowing me the time to share a few thoughts on that.
I'll take that as a motion to adopt resolution. Is that fair enough?
Sure.
Okay. So there's a motion by Commissioner Newman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Belcher. Any other, let's have further discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Impact and benefit were brought up earlier, and clearly the impact is going to be to the economy, and it'll either be a negative or a positive impact. And without this project going forward, we're looking at a negative impact. And people are always wanting us to work to keep their taxes down or even lower them. And the only way this board is able to do that is by bringing new economic development into this county. And we have to have that development in order to try and keep it competitive in terms of taxes and infrastructure, and it's also, we need to be able to rise to the challenges that are coming. Many of you are aware that the state of South Carolina is putting Port of Charleston in at Greer. That's their inland port. We're going to see a tremendous increase in traffic coming this way from that port. And we want to be open, and as I look at this also, we are concerned about the environmental impact in terms of, if we thought of this in terms of the earlier thinking on this, which would have been a circuitous route, the environmental impact would have been much greater than what we might see here. I mean, we don't want to impact anyone's home, but there comes a point where you have to make some tough decisions for the greater good of the county and for the greater good of the economy. The other benefit that I see that was in this resolution, and I think about this as I drive across the bridge, is the connectivity. We've heard about connectivity, and I actually think, given what DOT is talking about doing with making a, connecting on the eastbound side of the Bowen Bridge, an area where you can have bike and foot traffic, will actually, when all of this is said and done, probably result in a better connectivity from West Asheville to the center city. I also sit on the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Board, and I'm very much attuned to what's going to happen in the River Arts District. And most of us on that board feel that we need this piece of this puzzle done in order to be able to know what we can go forward with in the River Arts District, which is going to be a huge asset to Asheville and Buncombe County. And so, you know, that's why I'm going to be for this. But I would also, in closing, like to thank our board members, Commissioner Newman, Belcher, and Jones, and I'd also like to thank Julie Mayfield, Mayor Bisset, and Councilman Hunt, and all of the people who served on this. They did a lot of early mornings to do this, and I'm thankful they're the ones doing the early morning meetings on this. So I thank you for your service on it, and I'm going to move forward with this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Frye?
I'm going to support it, but I think we're supporting something. By the way, it's written that all we're trying to do is tell the state we want this amount of money to get it started, and then we want more. That's fake. People coming forward that's wanting to change ideas or wait till something else comes along, was here about a month ago, in the same group, are letting traffic go through this town and pollute. We're trying to get the pollution out and save lives in the same process. It's simple. The resolution is what it is. But the fact is, if we get scored at 2:30, that's where we're scored at. I don't think we can go back to the 3:39 for the flyover. I don't think this commission or the city council should add any more money into more studies as part of it. We need to leave this to the state and the feds, because that's where the money's coming from. It's our money. But the main thing is we're killing people on the Bowen Bridge. We're having tons of wrecks. It's not killing people. Mr. Bisset, I think I've been around since 89, and then Mr. Nesbit had a few conversations about, it was going to go all the way out to Inca and tie into the thing, but everybody was against it, so they got more money in Charlotte to do their interstates and stuff, because they just did them. They don't sit and argue about it. They just do what they say they're going to do. So I'm supporting $230,000, or $230 million. I'm not going to send, I'm not wanting to send it to the state and say, "Well, this might be good and it might not be good." I'm supporting that. So, thank you.
You know, the only thing I could add to it is, there's no easy answers here. The one thing we know for sure, and Mayor Bisset probably knows this better than anybody, is that if we don't get in line and we don't have the political guts to do something about this, other communities will build their roads, and we'll go to the bottom of the list, and we will never have anything. I look at Chamber President Kit Kramer here. The chamber has talked about this long before you were here, and we don't want to be talking about it long after you're gone. We want to get something done. I think there's a meeting of the minds between the county and city that we've got to take action. And if we don't do this, I suspect, I don't know, but I'm thinking we're going to be decades from even getting back in the picture again. So, we tried to weigh cost, multimodal, least number of lanes, deadlines we've got to meet, least disruption to the people we represent. There just isn't an easy, clean answer that just, "Oh, aha, moment, we can do this." It's going to be tough, but I think as a community, we will move ahead. It's going to be tough, but I think as a community, we will move ahead. It puts us in the game. It gives us an opportunity. I'm impressed the city has said they would be willing to consider a million dollars for doing some of the things here. So a lot of folks involved. We want to try to do the right thing. There's no way to split the baby. You just have to take a stand. And this, as Commissioner Newman said, this is not a specific plan. This is a concept. But we just, at some point, you just have to say, this is what the community needs. And I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I appreciate, understand differences of opinion. And I want to thank also Commissioner, Councilman Davis. I think we recognized all of them. These folks put in a lot of time. They didn't agree, and Julie Mayfield also involved with that. I share Commissioner King's comments about thanking you because they met just about every week for, how long? Year? A couple of years? I know it's been talked about for probably many, many years. And I think it's just one of the times the buck stops here at some point, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to move ahead. So, does anyone else want to make any comments? Commissioner Newman?
I want to say, give a little shout out to Jace Wayne and DOT. You all are not an enviable task. And about a year ago, there was a little bridge that got into some trouble, and the impact of that was the schoolchildren were going to have to be picked up, oh, probably two or three miles from the house. Once you realize the impact, that bridge was fixed in about three weeks. So I want to say thank you.
I'd also like to make a couple of comments. I want to, I'm very grateful to be part of this process and very excited. I've been very, very positive through the whole process. And I want to make sure that people understand that the focus of the working group and certainly the heart of this board is not to isolate anybody. As a matter of fact, what we're doing is tearing down walls to build a bridge. You know, we are bringing people together here this evening. That's what's going on. And that's what I'm very excited about. You know, it's, you know, we don't live in a day anymore where you can isolate communities. You know, we're going to work together to make sure that these communities are not isolated. But this is, as Chairman Gant said, this is much bigger than us and needs to be dealt with in a way that, you know, we may not all agree with, but we can all support. And I think that's what you're hearing tonight. And I, for one, am very pleased to be part of the process of bringing some calm to this discussion. And it is not the intent of this board to isolate anybody. As a matter of fact, it's the intent of everyone, I believe, you know, to move forward and lock arms and get done what we can for the, not only the communities but the region. And I think we'll do it in a positive way. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to support this this evening.
Yeah, Chairman Gant, sorry. There's one, just one other comment I wanted to make or observation I wanted to make. One of the, one of the important things that we have talked about a lot with this project is the idea of trying to separate interstate and local traffic, which is currently, again, 100% of it is co-mingled on the Bowen Bridge. And it's true that, I think one of the observations that one of the folks who spoke earlier is that some of the four and 4B alternatives do take more traffic off of the Bowen Bridge. And that is true. That is absolutely one of the key advantages of some of the other alternatives, no question about it. But it's also been observed or stated sometimes that the three alternatives do not separate interstate and local traffic. And that's actually, that's actually not correct. If any of these alternatives are built, virtually all true interstate traffic coming through Asheville will cross on the newly constructed bridge that will cross the French Broad River, not the Bowen Bridge. So all of the alternatives go a very long way towards separating true interstate traffic and local traffic. It is true that various alternatives take different numbers of the total volume of traffic off the existing Bowen Bridge and have different levels of benefit. But with any of these alternatives, there will be a very high degree of separation of truly local and interstate traffic, and I think that's an important point. And one of the important reasons that we feel like it is essential that some alternative, that new bridge across the French Broad River get completed in a timely fashion.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. All those of the, all those in favor of the resolution articulated by Commissioner Newman and seconded by Commissioner Belcher say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. The resolution passes seven to zero. Next, let's see, where, next we have the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have two just basically quick updates. There are things that you know about, but I would like the public to know that a couple of things are getting ready to happen. We included $1.8 million in the 2004 budget to add an elevator and replace the HVAC system at the Haywood Street building. Now, this is a 1970s building, so the architectural design, really to be a very functional building, we should have done a full renovation of it, but that price tag would have been between four and $6 million. So we included the two components in the budget. And as we got ready, right after the budget, to start making these changes, Greg Israel, our General Services Director, came to me and says, okay, Wanda, we've got the bids, and we need to go ahead and move these folks out of the building. And I'm thinking, okay, note to self, ask this question in future budgets, am I going to have to relocate somebody for a renovation? And so when I understood that we would have to move these people out of the building for a year, I really needed to stop and do a little bit of thinking. And so I went to the sheriff, and we sat down and we talked about the fact, if we've got to relocate for a year, is there a way to look at our existing space and really come up with a better solution overall? Because realistically, we were going to have a building with a renovated HVAC system and an elevator, but still not as functional as it needed to be. So at that point, we took a look around, and we made the determination that we could best serve sheriff needs going forward by going ahead and finishing the fourth floor in the courthouse and locating a part of his operations there and using our Lester Crossing facility to locate patrol operations. This gives us the opportunity for two or three things. One is to save a fair amount of money long run and provide services that's, in a way that's a lot more convenient for the citizens, easier to get to at Lester Crossing. And so they're going to house our patrol operations there, and we expect to be able to move those operations in about a month's time. So we've made really good progress there. The sheriff and I talked yesterday, and he's going to be scheduling some office hours himself there to make it easier access for citizens who want to meet with him. We'll also see a lot more sheriff cars in the area, and sometimes citizens just traditionally like to see the cars. They have a safer feeling when there's more presence of law enforcement in the area. As we move forward, we don't know if this will take place in a week or a month. We're working out the final finishes on the building. But Sheriff Duncan will be keeping the public informed on the exact date of the move, and you can expect to see a press release coming when we're actually ready to make that move. So I want to say thanks to you, all of you, and to the sheriff for being willing to make an adjustment on a dime, basically, and change how we're going to move forward with that space. And I do think this does several things for us. It improves our accessibility to the citizens. It's a much better use of the space that we have. It offers us the opportunity to be a lot more energy efficient. That is, Haywood Street's our least energy efficient building. And we will realize, receive several million dollars on the sale of that building. So this is probably my first announcement to the public that we have, we're going to have a building for sale, 2.4 acres. And it's bordered on the three sides with city streets. So it will be very valuable to us to convert that one to cash and use the space that we have available for the sheriff's operations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I think the staff's pretty excited about making this move.
Did the 1.8 million that we'd allocated for the renovation pretty much cover what we needed to do on the fourth floor?
And we've, I pushed them and said, you've got to do all of this in the 1.8. They've been very accommodating about that, and they realized that we do have that budget limitation.
So it's working out?
It's working out.
What, how valuable is the building that will be for sale, then?
We think it'll be worth between $2.5 and $3 million, but we will have it appraised so we can put it on the market, the appraised price. So hope for a better appraisal.
Does it also make more sense to have the sheriff at the courthouse?
Much easier, I think, for his operations because, you know, a big part of his operations sit next door in the detention center. And just being next to the courts for like civil processing and some of the other operations really is very helpful to be on the fourth floor. He's going to come next week to give us an update on some of his operations, and I think he'll very happily tell you that it works well for his operation. And I appreciate him being willing to make the adjustment and move out of that building.
Do, one more question. Do we own all the parking that's behind the building now? Are all the cars parked at, fenced?
At Haywood Street, we own what's fenced, yes. We own a total of 2.5 acres of Haywood Street.
Thank you.
And we can, we can hope that the buyer, I mean, it's good, it's good news to think about the influx of cash, but potentially better news is if it was a buyer that was taxable entity, that that would, we'd put that back on the tax rolls and see that return going forward.
That's a great point. We have been contacted by three different organizations. One was a nonprofit, but they wanted to lease, and we don't want to be in the leasing business long run. The other two are taxable entities, and we have shown that building for potential economic development also.
Fantastic.
That's great news.
Really good point. That is good.
Good job. Yeah, that's very good news, put that property back on tax roll. That's great.
The second point I want to make is, this is kind of an all call to the public. We need some help. We have had a firing range on Biltmore Square, I mean, not Biltmore Square, at Biltmore Estate for a number of years. And they've worked with us very closely, but as of September, we will no longer be able to use that facility for our firing range. We'll be using the Justice Academy, and we'll be using Madison County's facility on an interim basis. We need to train people in several areas. We have the sheriff, we have state operations, wildlife, highway patrol. We have some federal partners we train. We have the BLET program at AB Tech, and we have all six of our municipalities. We are all without a firing range. So we've looked at seven sites for outdoor ranges, and we've checked out a few others. We've been very thorough in our seven sites. We run into a couple of problems, really, and that's people concerned about both the noise and the traffic. Some safety concerns, but mostly it's noise and traffic. We've tried to work, we have worked great with Henderson County, but we don't want to be driving an hour to get to a facility for training when you have to train this large number of people. Our goal is to have a facility we can reach in 30 minutes from anywhere in the county. We'd also like to locate it in a community that has the community support for both pistol and rifle range firing, and we need some help. So what we're asking is citizens who know of property that might be out there that would be suitable for a firing range, to email me, and that's wanda.green, green has an E on the end, or it won't get here, at buncombecounty.org, and give us that address and let us go take it out. We need about 20 relatively flat acres, and we don't need it to be in a residential community. It doesn't take long to, for the residents to let us know they're not interested in having it close by. We need this information by the end of March because we are now very pressed to figure out how we're going to continue with this training. So just, our cry to the public is, if you know of 20 or more acres that's relatively flat and not in a dense environment, we'd very much like for you to give us a call or give me an email. It's the easiest way by far to reach us. And we'll go check out that property because we really have reached a point of, we need the facility. And outdoor ranges are one of our least popular things that we've talked to the public about. Any questions or observations or concerns?
Geographically, what type of setting causes the least sound travel?
I'd have to depend on Mr. Creighton to tell me that because I think if you're at a bowl, you have problems with the sound carrying.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, topo presents a number of problems. One, the expense of making a site. We had really what we thought was a perfect site, but it had two trout streams on it. Once you start grading, there's, you know, there's just no way to protect, you know, the environment. Like, say, if it's in a bowl, you've got neighbors around, then obviously that sound carries up, and you've got some problems. So, I mean, just kind of, we need a site that, okay, that we can take a look at and say, well, this will work. And it makes it really hard when you're, you know, you've got a population like ours. It's hard to get out by yourself.
And I would assume the more training that they have, the safer the public is as well.
Oh, yeah. Realistically, we want very trained officers. They have to train and qualify to keep their certification. And if you look at the long list of organizations that need to train, I personally, when I dial 911, I want the most qualified person that can roll in that vehicle to be at my house So hopefully, we'll hear from the public. Starting now would be fine.
You're getting emails now.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
Any other, let's see here. That's all the business we have today. We do have board appointments. African American Heritage Commission, I think in pre-session, we'll just go down the line and everyone will vote. We have three appointments. The way this will work, the city has already appointed three individuals to that commission. We're going to appoint three tonight, and the six of those, the six members of the commission will support, will appoint three more people, so there'll be a total of nine on there. So let's start with Commissioner Frost. Three individuals from the list. We interviewed all 15, or let's see, a couple didn't come in, but we had 15 interviews scheduled today. So we've heard some great applicants and some great people. Tough decision. Yes, ma'am?
Isaac Coleman, Angel Redman, and Sasha Mitchell.
Commissioner Newman?
Sasha Mitchell, Angel Redman, and Isaac Coleman.
Sasha Mitchell, Roy Harris, Angel Redman.
Sasha Mitchell, Catherine Mitchell, Isaac Coleman.
Sasha Mitchell, Angel Redman, Isaac Coleman.
Sasha Mitchell, Roy Harris, Isaac Coleman.
Sasha Mitchell, Christina Mitchell, and Angel Redman.
Chairman Gant, can I, this probably will happen anyway, but I would like to see if we could request that all our fine applicants be relayed to the board because there's three additional folks to be had, and it was a tough decision. So, and I think they'll know how to round, how to round it out and.
That's good. By consensus, we'll do that.
I agree with that. This was a very difficult thing. There were several good applicants, so it was a tough decision.
I would say, I would go far as to say it's one of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make in, I guess, 18 years I've done this. I agree. So if we could, by consensus, have Ms. Hughes send that to the group.
I think the other, sometimes we have to beg people to serve on these boards, and it was extraordinary for me to have so many people come forward and be so enthusiastic and want to serve.
Okay. Next, we have on the agenda, Board of Adjustment. I think in pre-session, we agreed to interview them next week, and we have three appointments there. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the commission will be April 1st, great day, beginning at 4:30 PM in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. And the commission meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable, Channel 192, ATT U-verse, Channel 99, live on BCTV Channel 192, and on buncombecounty.org during the meetings or online anytime. I don't think we needed a closed session tonight. Is that still the case? So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, guys.